Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. The agenda for a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chamber at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. Please rise before the invocation by the Reverend Brian Sharp of the Grace Christian Fellowship Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I always come with the privilege to be able to come and do this and never more than, never more than now, so let us pray. Father God, we come before you today, and I want to thank you, Lord, first of all, for your presence, for showing us your love and displaying your grace in so many ways. We thank you, Lord, for this city council and all of the entities that this group of people affects, and I pray your wisdom will rest upon them, that you will give them insight into issues, Lord, that are beyond their own, and I pray that you will help them to have courage to make the right decisions, to make the right choices, and to end up with laws and regulations and policies, Lord, that reflect you and your heart and your values and the values in your word. And tonight, Lord, we lift up a divided nation. Our nation needs healing. Our nation is in dire distress right now, Lord, because of the divisions and the hatred that is being bantered about in so many ways. So, Father, we pray for healing. We pray for unity. We pray, Lord, that those who are in power, Lord, whether it's power now or power in the future, that are in authority, that you will lead them and guide them, and that they will take the best interest of this citizenry of the United States of America to heart, and they will do as I have just prayed here for this council, that they, their decisions and their choices and their actions, Lord, will result in reflecting your perfect will and your values. Lord, we can't do it without you. We need you. This country was founded upon biblical principles, and we pray that that will continue. We pray, Lord, that your Holy Spirit will be in control, and, Father, where correction is needed, that that will be done; where courage is needed, that will be provided; and where righteousness is lacking, that it will be restored. We thank you, Lord, for your awesome mercy upon us, for your patience, for your love, and we thank you, Lord, most of all, for your presence. Thank you for the United States of America. We ask your blessing on us, continued blessing. We thank you for Papa Bluff, Missouri, and we thank you for all these that have an influence in our city. Bless this council, bless all the citizens, and we will be very careful to give you all the praise and the glory. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Sharp. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons.
Here.
Councilwoman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilwoman Cornman.
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Here.
Councilwoman Davis, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We do have a form.
Thank you, Clerk Young. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the presented agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. See, nine, item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the presented agenda. And I have Mr. Michael Barrett. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Michael Barrett. I live at 1415 North Fifth Street. To start with, don't fear that I'm going to take on that because I got papers. I got copies for all of you guys. I took notes because I didn't want you to have to. To start with, I want to thank this council so much. I appeared in front of this council a year, maybe a little over ago, requesting more police presence in my neighborhood. Chief Whitley stepped up, and the officers have stepped up, and we see a great deal of police presence, and I can't applaud enough. Back during that time, I mentioned the fact that I moved to Papa Bluff in Jonesboro, Arkansas. I've been an educator for 24, 25. I can't believe I've been an educator that long. I'm not that old. But I have been, and I'm now teaching at Papa Bluff High School again. I teach computer science. And I moved into, back into Bluff because there was a time that I worked at Three Rivers College. I was director at Three Rivers College over the Department of Labor grant, and my wife and I fell in love with Papa Bluff back then. There are so many things to love about Papa Bluff, and what I'm going to talk to you about tonight is one of the things that I don't love, and I can't believe that any of you guys do either. And since you stepped up whenever I came the last time, I know you will step up for me and for the people of this city again and at least consider what I've got to say. I mentioned to this council back that time about the litter problem that we have in our area. It was such a deal that Matt and myself, we spoke, and I adopted my block. I even taught my students at Papa Bluff High School into adopting Oak Grove Road. I hope you've been down Oak Grove Road. We can keep it clean. It looks beautiful. Looks nice, and me and my students will check it out. I mean, occasionally, one of them will come in and say, "Mr. B., we need to pick up trash today," you know? And we do it, and we go pick it up. My neighborhood, I can easily keep Fifth Street in front of my house clean. The other three streets, I fear I'm just kicking a dead horse. I mean, whenever I turn the corner of Davis, I can clean it up, and I had plans to do it Monday. I had to go see my dentist Monday, and I didn't get a chance to, but I can clean it up Monday, and in two weeks, it looked like it hadn't been touched in a year. And I don't want to come before this council with something that I don't have some ideas. One of the big reasons why that, that just really kind of bothers me, and not just because that my home is in that neighborhood, and I can keep my home clean. Rob, you've been to my home, and I mean, in my street, me and John and Miss Carolyn and all, I mean, we keep our street clean, but the neighborhood, we just can't control it. But the thing that really breaks my heart, Ronnie Martin, our Director of Transportation, has found out, thanks to my wife, that I have a CDL, and I can drive a school bus also. And I want to tell you guys, I have delivered middle school children to homes that I wouldn't raise a pig in. I mean, I don't mean to be that way, but I mean, it's almost to the point where it's brought tears to my eyes whenever I see these little guys walking into these homes, and it's not just mud and poor or whatever. I mean, I was, I grew up poor. Probably, most of us grew up poor, but we weren't nasty. You know what I mean? And, I mean, I've thought about this now for some time, and I've come up with some ideas. I have a good friend of mine who is the 911 Director in Jonesboro and works with code enforcement. His name's Jeff Presley. Some of you guys may know him. Him and I went to school together. And I've spoken with Jeff. I've done some research, and to start with, I want to apologize. I only brought eight copies of this, and there's nine of them. But here are some of my ideas, and I will, I'll give you my notes. And if, Council, I reckon, I realize, if you have any new ideas or anything that could come to this next party.
I hear she's children.
Just give that to her. I'll give it to her. We're good.
Thank you.
I realize that any time you're trying to, to kind of start something, that it's going to take money, and I think, what have I got here, like 15 different ideas that other cities? The city of Jonesboro enforced a bunch of this stuff, and it worked. I don't know if you guys remember the north side of Jonesboro about 10 years ago, how you drove through there pretty quick because you didn't want to hang around there? It's beautiful now. It's pretty. And we could make Papa Bluff like that. I mean, we could. And I know that enforcing all of these things and taking a real, you know, a real hard look at all of this, maybe it's not something that you can do immediately, but take some of these things, and let's begin. One of the big problems that I have with even the neighborhood pickup, yeah, I cleaned up my block. I cleaned up Fifth Street, Davis, and Alice, and for a while, and thank you, Robert, for your help with lighting down the hill down there. I told you the other day that light was out. It's not. It's still working, but I still can't control the litter down there. It's gotten out of hand. Pershing has got to the point to where that there is, there's bags. I mean, there's just bags of trash. And then I've talked to different neighbors, and I had, you know, one of my neighbors that said, "Well, those bags fall off of the trash truck. They don't fall off the trash truck and be stacked neatly." I mean, that doesn't happen. And if litter and stuff does fall off a trash truck, why are we still using that company? Why are we not finding those companies?
Mike, I'm going to have to cut you off. I don't mean to be rude to you, but we're, we're.
I'm going to allow you a certain amount of time.
Yes, sir. And let me just say it here, you've got some great ideas here, and I do know and I understand what you're talking about, and I know the area. That particular area has been a problem, and that's kind of why we had a light put down there some years back, but it appears that it's not doing a whole lot of good right now.
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, if you've got, if you've traveled virtually anywhere in Bluff, it's not just our area. There's trouble all over. One of the big things that I will, I come to you and I want help with, I mean, I'm too old to do it anymore. I'm just going to have to say I'm not capable of keeping my block clean. I'm sorry. I mean, I'm willing to help if you guys can get me some help. If you can, if you can get some of the churches, some of the club, you know, get me some kind of clubs, get me somebody that can work with me. I've talked to my neighbors about doing neighborhood pickup or what have you, and they laugh at me. They say the city's not going to keep it clean once we get it clean. We get no help.
Well, I can assure you that after this, and I know how bad, bad it is, I will take it as a personal priority to assisting keeping that area clean. I can't, I can't do the whole city, but I can do that area because I live in that area too. I know what you're talking about, and I'm very passionate about that area.
I appreciate that. I mean, if nothing else, let's take a few of these items, and let's just start on one or two. Maybe we can just start putting signage up all over town, hey, that we're going to enforce litter laws, you know?
And this is doable. It is. It's not asking too much.
Pick some of them that can be done that will be a help. And I apologize for taking so much time. Thank you, Council, for listening.
Well, I appreciate you coming down and talking to us. That's why I said the other day, come down and tell everybody.
Yeah.
And that way, we can get, start to work on this.
And like I say, the notes that I took, that's research from other cities, from my friend Jeff Presley. This has worked in other places. I think it can work for us if we begin. We got to start somewhere. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, too. If there be no one else, we will move on to item seven, the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may do so. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. A, the City Council will consider a request for reinstatement of a taxicab business license. Mr. Winters.
So in your packet, you should have some information about JJ's cab service. Their, their taxicab license has been suspended, and they've requested, they've provided a written request to appear before you tonight to ask you to reverse that suspension. That's something with taxicab companies that is under your purview and authority. You know, there was an incident on New Year's Day that kind of led to all this with one of their cabs being involved in an accident with a police vehicle. There's an issue with some licensing of the vehicle and some insurance on the driver. After looking at what was provided, do you have any questions? Do you put, of me or?
Well, I've had a number of phone calls and complaints concerning the cab company. I, I personally think that we probably should leave the suspension in place for at least 90 days, and I don't know how the rest of them feel about it, but, but they need to come in compliance and continue to be so. We cannot allow any business to operate out of compliance, and that's serious. And when you, when you've got property damage, it's a good thing that no one was hurt, but when you've got property damage and no insurance or, or insurance is not in compliance or your license, you have to pay a price for it, and I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
Well, I think that if, I mean, 90 days is probably not even enough, but if we were to look at it in 90 days, I think that there should have to be a report made to the city monthly because insurance, if they pay it on a monthly basis, they might have insurance this 30 days, but if you don't pay it, you're not going to have it this 30 days, and that can come and go, and we've given them a license, and they don't comply, as has happened now.
Well, you're required by ordinance to show proof of insurance.
Right, but if you, but they'll show a six-month proof of insurance, but I'm saying unless they pay that full six months upfront, that insurance is only good until they make their next payment.
Does the cab company have any representation here? Would you like to come up and speak?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Josh, Councilman, cab company. I realize I've messed up, and I haven't kept my cars up to date with the tags and stuff and with the city hall, and I do, I do apologize.
Excuse me, Josh, can you give us your, pardon? Can you, can you give us your address?
Oh, it's 415 West Midland Street. I'm sorry. Guys, we can't wait 90 days. I apologize. We can't do it. That'll put me totally out of business. I mean, like you said, we pay insurance every month, and honestly, the city hall knows before I know if the city, if the insurance has been canceled. I swear to that. The, you open at 7:30. At 7:30 in the morning, on Monday morning, whenever the insurance is out, they know before I do. We pay every month for our insurance. I've been out maybe twice of insurance out of the 15 months we've been open, and it was just overnight, maybe a day, but we've always kept it.
I think that the, the insurance issue wasn't that it was lapsed, but that the driver that was involved in the accident.
That was a mistake with the insurance company. I spoke to them today, and whenever I, I had recently changed insurance companies, and they did not send his information over with, from one company to the other. So they just, that was on them. That wasn't really my fault, and I didn't know it until he wrecked the car. I mean, I fired him the same day he wrecked the van, naturally, you know, because my insurance went at 500 and something more dollars. And, yeah, I'm shaking. I'm not mad. It's just the blood pressure. I just, I know, we've serviced the community very well. Mr. Mayor, you know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody, everybody is dependent on us. We cannot wait 90 days. We are so getting behind right now at even funny, but I can pull back out of it, but I can't wait 90 days. There's no way. I mean, let me look through what I've got here. I mean, we got people that has to go to doctor's departments. We got people that actually are nurses that has to go back and forth to work, and they rely on us. Sandy's is not open 24 hours a day. We are. We got a dispatcher on, on call 24/7, and we've got drivers on the road 24/7. I mean, I admit, we've run personal cars to keep open. I know we wasn't supposed to do that, but at least we were still getting them back and forth to work, you know? Nobody was missing work, but I won't do that no more. I'll admit it. All my drivers is now up to date. One of them has to get a city permit. All the rest of them is all good. I just, I'm literally begging you, don't make me wait 90 more days. I can't do it. Guys, I put everything I've got into this company.
Mr. Council, how do you account for the improper?
Sir, I can't hear you.
How do you account for the improper plate on the vehicle?
That was, that was on me. I had so many things going on at the time, I just thought that could wait, but I just waited too long.
These are serious liability issues here to someone. I mean, if you're not in compliance to city ordinance, I mean, this, you know, is very serious.
Right. I know I've messed up.
And this, the police vehicle that, that you guys hit.
I know I've messed up. I've got a lady that I've hired to be a manager for me, and she's, she is willing to do everything she can to make sure that I make sure the cars are legal 100% monthly.
How long have you run a cab service?
We've been open 15 months. October 2019 is when we opened.
Are there any other instances of non-compliance?
That was my question, too.
Councilwoman?
I, Ms. Ms. Young may be able to answer that question. I'm not sure. Were there any other instances of non-compliance since, since Mr. Council opened his cab company?
I think Mr. Council has alluded to the fact that from time to time, his insurance has expired, and.
But we always manage to get it right back within 24 hours.
Right, but during that time, you've got a liability to the person that you are taking back and forth.
Right.
You know, it's just like your staff.
Well, we get shut down. If you tell us to shut down, we shut down. We don't mess with cars. I moved one cab one time and just drove it to like Rent One up there trying to borrow money from a denation, just so we could stay afloat, and other than that, the car, the cabs ain't been moved. I mean, I'm not playing with it. I don't want to get no trouble, but.
Mr. Council, I want to, our community, our small business community's been through a lot through COVID, and I hate to say any small business.
Right.
What I want to do is I want, I want to make a motion that on a monthly basis, you come in, talk to Ms. Ms. Young, Mr. Winters, any paperwork that they may need, deliver immediately, update a driver list, whatever they may need. But I would like the motion to reverse the suspension and go back into business immediately.
Well, I would greatly appreciate that. I mean, guys, like I said, well, go, I'm begging you. I put everything I've got into this, other than mortgages in my home, and I don't want to do that. If I had to, I would, but don't put us out of business, guys. You take 90 more days, I'm just, that's going to ruin me.
I'm going to add something to that. I sell insurance for a living.
Right.
In 24 hours, you could lose a lot more than just your business.
Oh, yeah, I know.
If you had an accident without insurance, or if you were driving a private car as a taxi.
Absolutely. We don't, we don't do that stuff no more. I promise you, we don't.
Also want to add in that motion, a six-month probationary period for anything that goes wrong. There won't, there won't be any other chances on this, but I don't want to see you go out of business.
Right.
I can't speak for, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but that's my personal opinion.
I mean, if I have to, I come in every Friday and show you what we got, make sure.
What are your thoughts, Nevada, on that? I mean, that's a lot to keep up for you.
I have, myself and Danny Whitley, the police chief, have talked, and we have already put in place that every cab company will visit me once a month with good insurance papers and what vehicles they're running. Our ordinance calls for a sticker to be put on each car so that the police department and citizens can identify that that is a licensed cab.
The insurance company asked me if I had a badge on my cars. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. This, this last week, we had those stickers made, so that's going to help as well, so that we can keep an eye. We, we have a lot of reports of personal vehicles being used as cabs, but we can't track those.
Go ahead.
You can, if you talk to whoever was driving, there's a good chance they're going to tell you they're picking up their mother, and they're not a cab service, so, but yes, as long as.
And how about restitution to the city? Has that been, I mean, because if you didn't have insurance.
We did have it.
You did?
Yes.
There was insurance?
Yes, ma'am. We was, we are covered, was covered, and still are covered.
I'm, I'm not an expert on what's happening with the insurance, but I do knew at the time, they were not going to cover it because the driver was not covered, and I know that our insurance claims department is working on that now. It's pending.
They did recall you today?
I did not hear from anyone today saying it was.
Probably tomorrow then. But I talked to them today, and they said the pending has been lifted, so they're going to pay for it. So it was just the whole ordeal with the driver not being covered, and I didn't even know he wasn't covered anymore.
I would like to see a letter, I mean, an email or something from.
The insurance company.
I think all of us council people should have a copy of that.
Yeah, I would, I would add that to my.
Yeah, we will definitely keep you abreast of what's going on.
I'd add that to my motion. That would be a part of it.
Okay. Did you get that motion?
Okay. Reinstate six-month probationary period.
Guys, I sure appreciate y'all.
And the council would like to see documentation of compliance.
Yes, all compliance, including updated driver's list for the insurance company.
Okay, well, let me allow the rest of the council to comment before we get a second on that. Any other comments from the council?
I think it's a good idea, a probationary period, but it's, it's necessary to be in compliance and to, to keep contact with our city clerk or whoever representative she has there, but, I mean, you, this is, is a big, you know, it's a big break.
Right. I understand.
And whatever's necessary there for you to do, you need to do, you know, to keep your business rolling.
We'll do it.
I mean, we appreciate your service in the community.
Yes, sir.
We want it to be lawful.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, we have a lot of people relies on us. We don't want to lose our business.
Okay.
Well, and that's, some of the people in my ward have said, now, if they did something that they need their license taken away, take it away.
Right.
But you also need to know that we're waiting hours to get a ride.
Right. Yeah, we just didn't have enough cars before.
Go places.
We just didn't have enough cars before. I mean, I got two, and Sandy's got two. That's just four cars. We got, what, 20-some thousand people in Papa Bluff, and half of them ride the cab? You can't do it with four cars. It's impossible, but we do the best we can.
But they said, if you think he shouldn't have it, don't think he doesn't have it, but just know what we're going through.
And sir, I would, excuse it, okay, to speak?
Okay.
I would think, you know, if there's any more instances like that, that it's, it's going to be more, more difficult. There's a responsibility here, a safety responsibility, and different things.
And, and Josh, I just want you to understand, it's not, it is not our intent, especially me personally, it's not any intent to put you out of business, and I, I do empathize, and I do understand what you're saying, and someone made a comment earlier about small business, and I do know and I understand the problem the small businesses are having. And like I said, it's not our intent to create any further hardship, but there's something has to be, be done.
Right.
And with that being said, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second on that motion? Okay, just a simple voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Item B, the City Council will review the updated Papa Bluff ADA Section 504 Self-Evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the. This is a document that really, it's not any new policies. It's just kind of a combination of all the different policies that we have in different areas of the city regarding ADA compliance. This document is required by different community development block grants that we've received in the past. Also, the grant that we're gonna be talking about next on the agenda tonight, it will be submitted along with that to hopefully garner some additional bonus points for that. Like I said, it's not anything new. As far as what's in the document, it's just kind of a combination of different policies that we already have in place and different ordinances that we already have in place. It's just a more of a centralized kind of compilation of what we already have, so. And I am asking if you would vote to adopt this during tonight's voting session so that it can be submitted with this grant application that we're gonna be talking about next.
I make a motion to move it to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item C, the city council will consider a request to submit a grant application for the Wolf Creek TAP project. Mr. Winters.
Mr. Andrew Murphy from the Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission is working on this application. I'll let him come up and tell you about it.
Okay.
Hi, how are y'all doing? Andrew Murphy, thirty-nineteen Ferr Street, I'm with Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission. MoDOT has what they call their Transportation Alternative Program or TAP applications. And those are used mainly for trails and sidewalks, you know, non-motorized transportation. Typically, those come out in about September timeframe of even-numbered years. But like a lot of thing, COVID-19 delayed the grant application. MoDOT at first didn't think they were gonna have the application this year at all. Then in, I believe, around Thanksgiving, a little after Thanksgiving, they, they said they would go ahead and do around with fifty percent of their normal funding. So the amount of funding available is about half of what's typically available. And the Papa Bluff Chamber has kind of spearheaded this project. But you do have to be a local public agency, a city or county, to be able to apply to this funding. So the city of Papa Bluff is acting as the sponsor to this project. And the project itself is about five hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars in total. We'll be requesting seventy-five percent of that, which is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then the remaining one hundred and twenty-five thousand and ninety-one dollars is gonna be made up by a combination of the Chamber of Commerce and the Park Department. So the Chamber has committed to one hundred thousand, ninety-one dollars. And then the Park Department is committing to twenty-five thousand dollars of that. I'm not sure if Lanny provided the twenty-five thousand dollar commitment letter to y'all. I know I sent Nevada the Chamber, okay. So you do have commitment letters in your packets, I believe, from both the Chamber and the Park Department. So the city of Papa Bluff actually isn't gonna be out any, any financial burden of this if it is awarded. The project itself is to construct a one-point-eight-five-mile trail from pretty much where PP Highway narrows down to two lanes before the roundabout to the Wolf Creek Trailhead on County Road 447. So if you're familiar with that area at all, and you're heading out PP Highway and you go past the roundabout, there's about three county roads on your right, and that third county road is Mark Twain National Forest. And you go just a little bit up that county road, and Wolf Creek has their southern trailhead there for the Mark Twain National Forest Service. So this would connect with that twenty-one miles of trail. There's about five different trails on the National Forest Service grounds that encompasses twenty-one miles. So this would connect essentially the Shelby Road sidewalk corridor with, with the Wolf Creek Trail.
So, yeah, like you said, you know, this is not a, we're basically acting as a pass-through agency for this. It's not gonna, we're not gonna be out any funding ourselves, although match that's required is provided by the Chamber and the Parks Department. None of this project is actually in the city limits, but I think it's good to partner with these other agencies in the county and the Park Service to make this connection, to connect those areas of trails that are used quite a bit with our community.
And Butler County has also provided a support letter for the project. And if any of their right-of-way along 447 can be used, they're gonna allow any construction to be on their right-of-way. That letter is not in your packet. That came after we submitted to Nevada. But the county has supplied a support letter. Then MoDOT is also required through the grant application to submit a letter. They haven't gotten to it yet, but they know about the project and verbally, they're on board with it and will provide us a letter of support as well. The application deadline's January twenty-ninth, which is why we're workshopping everything tonight. And the self-evaluation that was just on there will help get us some points on the application. MoDOT gives you a category of up to ten points if you have an ADA transition plan on file. This is not a full ADA transition plan, but there's basically no cities in southeast Missouri that have a full ADA transition plan yet. So this should help the city get some points there. The match commitment will also help get some points. It's an eighty-twenty grant, meaning you have to request, or you have to put in at least twenty percent. And if you put in twenty-five percent, you get some bonus points there, which the Chamber and the Park Department are putting in twenty-five percent. So we should get a little bit of bonus points for the twenty-five percent commitment and then a little bit of bonus points for the self-eval from earlier.
I'll make the motion to move to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, action required items. Item AA, bill number eight-two-eight-six. The city council will take action on an ordinance approving the Papa Bluff ADA Section 504 self-evaluation plan.
Motion for first reading of Bill eighty-two-eight-six.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Clerk Young.
An ordinance approving the Papa Bluff ADA Section 504 self-evaluation plan for the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Clerk Young.
An ordinance approving the Papa Bluff ADA Section 504 self-evaluation plan for the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number eight-two-eight-six is adopted. Item BB, resolution number nineteen forty. The city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the city to submit a grant application for the Wolf Creek TAP project.
Motion for the reading of resolution nineteen forty.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Clerk Young.
A resolution of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an application for a grant from the Missouri Department of Transportation, TAP program, for the Wolf Creek Connector Trail project for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption, resolution nineteen forty.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution number nineteen forty is adopted. Item ten, city managers' report.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I really don't have anything to report this evening. Things are running smoothly.
Wonderful. Is there any other business that need to be brought before the council? If there be none, the chair will entertain the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, Winder.
All in favor?
I'm the second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose?